Welcome this afternoon. Shreveport City Council is now called to order. The Chair will give the invocation and Vice Chair will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. To God be all glory, we thank you for this new year as we've come together and assembled here to do the city's business. Almighty God, we pray for those that are in health and sickness. And God, we pray that you would be with our city, be with our workers, and protect them and watch them as they go about doing their daily chores and duties. We pray, O God, for our Mayor and the leadership and for this council, and we pray forgiveness of our sins in Christ's holy name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) Pledge with me? A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please now call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor, present.
Councilwoman Fuller, present.
Councilwoman Nicholson, present.
Councilwoman Booker, present.
Councilwoman Fuller, present.
Councilwoman Green, here.
And Councilwoman Volker.
The Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and the City Council meeting on Friday, December 18th of 2020. Is there any discussion?
Second.
Second, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? And that passes with five here and present and one absent and one out of the chamber. Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests at this time? I would like to ask if it would be prohibited. I'd like to ask the City Attorney if we might recognize him at this time. I would like for us, if it would be agreement here, if we could suspend the rules and to approve the City Attorney's Assistant Attorneys that he's going to present to us here so that they might get on the payroll and go to work. Is any objection to that?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
And second by Councilman Green. Any discussion on that? We're going to recognize our City Attorney to review the applications, resumes.
Thank you, Chair. Happy New Year, everybody. Good afternoon. As you all know, the legal department has been understaffed for a significant period of time. And Deputy Scott, as well as City Attorney Monique Davis, Assistant City Attorney, we vetted some viable candidates and we've chosen three. The first being Sonny Lopez, he's from Plackerman. He's a 2020 graduate of Southern University with a Master's in Business Administration. He recently passed the bar exam and he expressed his willingness to pay his dues and learn as much as he can. The second being Mr. David Kaplovitz, he's a graduate of the Tulane Law School. He had previous experience working with his father as an attorney in Michigan. He also has some additional intellectual property experience working as an intern in Virginia. He's a very exciting and interesting young man, and I think he will also be an asset to the City Attorney's office. The final person is Monishka Garcia Desgade. She's a Southern University graduate passing the bar in 2020. She also did some juvenile law work at the University of Pittsburgh. She has a Bachelor of Arts in English and Writing, and she worked as a legal intern in Miami. And she's a former teacher, teaching math and English, and she also has a second language in French. I'd like to put all three of these individuals up to be Assistant City Attorneys, please.
Councilman Nicholson, if you, this is to be a joke now, but an attorney that hasn't had go before ethics anything, these all seem to be real good folk and new into practice and would make a great excellent. So I think this is a good selection. What say you?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly trust Mr. Latier to select his own assistants, and I appreciate his bringing these nominations before the council.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? The motion's been made and seconded, and let's vote.
To suspend.
To suspend the rules. And that passes with five in the chamber, one absent, and one not in the chair. Now, let's make a motion to confirm.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second by the Chair.
Chairman, you have to first make a motion to add it to the agenda, and that has to be unanimous, and we have to have public comments as well.
So move to add these to the agenda.
Aye. Second by the Chair. Councilman Green made the motion, I second, okay? Any discussion? Let's vote.
You have to have public comments.
Oh, all right. Excuse me. Will the Vice Chair handle that?
First, should we ask Danielle to explain the whole process of all we're doing this? Ms. Ewing, will you explain to everyone what's happening and why we're doing what we're doing?
The current appointments are not on the agenda, so a motion has been made and seconded to add them to the agenda. And before that can take place, public comments have to be taken only on adding this to the agenda, and then the vote must be unanimous in order for this item to be added.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to adding these appointments, these confirmations, to the agenda? No one's coming forward, Chairman.
Okay. And so we can go ahead and make the motion now to?
You already made the motion, so you can go ahead and vote.
Okay, we're ready to vote. Please vote. And that passes. Five, four, one out of the chamber, one absent. Okay, thank you, Mr. Latier.
Thank you very much.
No, that was just to add to the agenda.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we now need a motion to approve.
A motion to approve now, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'll make the motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Then let's vote. Now we have votes, five, four in favor, one out of the chamber, and one absent. That has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Latier.
Thank you. Thank the council very much.
Okay, do we have any other council member at this time that could be recognized for awards, recognitions? Yes.
Just like to say welcome back to Mrs. Ewing after her turn.
Yes, yes.
It's good to be back.
Okay, does the Mayor, Perkins, you're recognized now for awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests.
I do not have any awards or recognitions. I do have some comments, though, Mr. Chairman. Is that okay? I said I do have some comments. Is that all right? All right. As many of you know, unfortunately, we lost one of our own to COVID-19 over this past week. Shreveport firefighter Leonard Coney is expected to be laid to rest this Saturday. Visitation will be from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Friday at Precious Memories Funeral Home, and from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Friday at First Baptist Church on Oakley Drive. The funeral will be at 1:00 p.m. Saturday at First Baptist Church. Firefighter Coney contracted the virus in the line of duty while serving others. He was not the first city employee to lose their battle with COVID-19. Early in this pandemic, in April 2020, we lost both Robert Smith in Public Works and Shelley Williams with Shreveport Police Vehicle Maintenance. I'd like to ask everyone to take a moment of silence at this time to remember them and their service to the city. Thank you. Also, we have managed to get the first doses of the vaccine to 132 of our EMS firefighters and are looking forward to getting the vaccine to additional members of Shreveport Fire Department and our frontline workers very, very soon. Meanwhile, I ask that everyone do their part to help stop the spread of the virus in our community, wear a mask, practice social distancing, and adhere to mitigation guidelines. The past year was challenging for us all. This year, we are looking to take steps that will put Shreveport on the road to recovery with the 2021 Bond Proposal. The 2021 Bond Proposal includes a new central police fires, I'm sorry, a new central police station, and embeds officers in our neighborhoods by establishing police substations, relocations of fire stations 14 and 15, as well as providing police and fire with much-needed equipment, a new state-of-the-art workforce development center, and a fiber-to-the-door initiative which will spur economic development, generate revenue, and ensure that everyone has access to affordable, high-speed internet. And finally, the 2021 Bond will make long overdue repairs to Shreveport's streets and drainage, improve area attractions and recreational facilities, upgrade our bus stops, rehabilitate our water system, our water tower, and make critical repairs to Shreveport water intake. It's especially of note to note that this bond proposal is almost identical to the previous one that our citizens chose, but we did make minor adjustments in listening to the citizens after the previous 2019 bond proposal. Many of those adjustments include making more robust offers with economic development. Our improved financial outlook puts us in a good position to pursue this general obligation bond, and this bond puts Shreveport on track for future growth. We have some appointees on the Clerk's report that I know, oh, we already got to the appointees from the City Attorney, so that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor, did you forget to acknowledge Calvary?
I'm sorry?
Did you forget my request on acknowledging Calvary football?
Oh, no, no, I did not forget that request. Also, just so everybody knows, and we put it on the city page as well, just so everybody knows, we had two teams to go to the state playoffs this year in football. Bird, Yellow Jackets, unfortunately fell short, but also I want to congratulate Calvary Baptist as well for winning a state championship. So thank you to Calvary, and let's congratulate them and give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Mayor. Did Bird be Captain Tree?
I don't remember. I don't, I don't, I don't remember if Bird be Captain Tree. Too long ago.
Does anyone have, does anyone have any questions or real concerns relative to property standards to Mr. Green? Hi, Mr. Green.
Hello.
So good to see you. I hope you had a great one.
Good to see you, too.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Just want to say that the Long John Silver is on King's Highway is down, and thank you for your help with several other things in the district.
You're welcome. Mr. Green, thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Taylor?
Would you extend our sincere condolences to Mr. Mahoney on the loss of his father, please? Would you extend our sincere condolences to Mr. Mahoney?
I will do so.
On the loss of his father, please.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Green. A revenue collection plan been implemented by the Finance Department, I believe. Everybody received that. Surety bond, porters, is it coming sometime this week, maybe, Mr. Latier?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Surety bond report. Public hearing, none. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be added today?
Not that I'm aware of.
None that's aware, okay. We have the following public comments. Recognize the Vice Chair and who controls the time.
Thank you, Chair. Please give your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak.
She is passing some important information around to you guys. Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104, District B. The information that you guys are receiving is information that we've gathered from our Tuesday Morning Breakfast Group over the past month or so, based on the amount of murders that happened in the city of Shreveport and the tumultuous situation that we are facing. From an economic standpoint, we took it upon ourselves to mobilize a coalition of business owners. Our good councilperson, Tabitha Taylor, joined us for a few of those breakfasts, and this particular document is basically being authored to you guys because in two weeks I'll be here to present the full game plan for our 2021 initiative, which will hit on those six areas that you see: violent crime prevention, mediation and reduction, inner-city economic development, inner-city community development, civic and political education, cultural enlightenment, and spiritual enlightenment. One of the big things that I constantly tell people throughout this country, especially here in Shreveport and on social media, is that crime is not a problem. Crime is a symptom of a problem. The actual problem that creates crime starts within the mind of a person who is spiritually and culturally bankrupt. So you're not going to solve crime, I don't care how many police officers you have. And although Chief Whiteheart, you did a great job when you were police chief, guess what we still have? Crime, violent crime. So it doesn't matter who the police chief is and all of these other entities. This is a community initiative that we must take. The police, all law enforcement, respond to crime. I think some of the only ones that are supposed to prevent crime are the FBI, CIA, and I think we know as of last week, they don't do a good job of that in terms of Capitol Hill. So our job now is to mobilize the grassroots coalition that's going to actually help you guys do your job, which is to actually inspire, empower, save, and transform the city of Shreveport and the parish of Caddo. So we're not asking for anything. We're bringing these particular resources, our human capital, to the table to actually help the City Council and the Mayor effectively do the job, because right now the city of Shreveport is in a very bad state. And lastly, we definitely have to be very focused because we have an international event coming to this city within the next four months, and we definitely do not need the plethora of murders that have been going on this past year. So it's our job to help you guys, and I look forward to bringing our full-scale plan to the table in two weeks. Thank you.
Craig, when you get a chance this, this week, could you reach out to me in regards to Antoine House?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year to you all.
Great day.
My name is John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 121, Shreveport, Louisiana. I think I posed this question to you all before with regards to Section 9A and D. Though they represent one resolutions and the other ordinance, they are both on for second reading and final passage. I didn't know why they could not be combined. Maybe the resolutions and then the ordinances, but to have them so far set apart on the agenda just doesn't make much sense to me, but that's me. But I ask that you all consider that. Earlier today, I was thinking about you all, and not just you all, but every elected official who we, the General Public, elects to represent us. And I thought, you all have an awesome task to be able to do that, and we know that each of you represent districts individually. You represent the city collectively as well. And we're just asking that this year, that we will look to represent the city as a whole. No more of this bipartisan, no more party affiliations, no more race, but the issue's at hand. What can we do to help you all be better stewards of our city? We're not only holding you accountable, we're holding ourselves accountable, too. So I, speaking for myself, as one of we, the people, is asking you, is there something that I can do that can help all of us help our city raise to her feet and whereby she'll stay on her feet? Number two, as I looked at the agenda, I saw, although it won't be approved until January 26th, a lot of amending to the 2021 budget in different departments, but amending nonetheless. I'm trying to figure out why. Didn't we just approve the budget back in December of 2020? So what is this all about? Again, being a good steward means that I need, as a citizen, as you all should have, an answer to the questions I ask. I'm not your enemy, I'm just a citizen who is concerned about our city. We know that we have to work together in order to get anything accomplished, and we've been divided for too long, and the divisiveness that brings it about, it needs to end. I thank you for your time. Happy New Year, and God bless.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Good afternoon. For the record, Irma Rogers, 1920, Meeshoot Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. I'm here to speak on item number 206, pass D under ordinances. This one comes on a zoning, zoning case number 20-148C. It concerns property located at the southeast corner of Peach Street and Norton Street. This is the same vicinity whereby we had a coalition of members from the MLK area down here on March 10th last year, probably your last meeting before we were shut down for the pandemic. More than 100 of our citizens were in attendance. This particularly proposed property, which is duplexes, still ask to change the zoning from R1-5, usually known as R1H, single-family housing, to R3 multifamily. The bringer or developer of this has not spoken with Martin Luther King Community Development Corporation, nor has he or she spoken with Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association, as I have been in contact with Mr. Benny Doty, who is the president of that association. So I'm respectfully asking you to please decline this request based upon the same measures that we brought last year in March. There is already 110 units at Cooper Road Plaza on Peach Street. So if you need multifamily development, it's already there. Most of our neighbors who are property owners, as myself and business owners, look for stabilization, which is R1H. Homeowners, home ownership. Home ownership is the basis for stabilizing a community, and if we need stabilization at any time, we need it now. We have worked for years and years trying to make sure we better our area. We do know we usually support fourth and fifth lowest in crime, even though we are largest. So I ask for you to please consider what the citizens want for that area. Also, we'd like to speak about the new bond issue, we'd just like a little bit of input in terms of economic development. Okay? Mr. Chairman Fleury, Vice Chairman Fuller, my City Councilwoman Taylor, ask you to vote no. And to you, Mr. Mayor and CEO, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Just for the record, I was in attendance at the MPC meeting on that day and expressed my disappointment with the MPC for allowing this to even roll over to our coffers, so I stand in full agreement.
Thank you. Sincerely appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Hello. My name is Kay Grammer Camp. My address is 2025 East Kings Highway, 71105. I am speaking in support of Ordinance 196, specifically the Neighborhood Participation Plan, the NPP. I see this as a positive effort created by the MPC staff and supported by the MPC Board to protect our public health, safety, and general welfare, which is their purpose, as I understand it. The MPC Board first discussed the concept of the NPP at its November 6th, 2019 work session. I was there. Since I retired two years ago, I've been in the audience for many MPC, UDC, Parish Commission, and City Council meetings. Some of the MPC cases have been contentious. At last Wednesday's MPC Board meeting, it was reported that a zoning case in which I was very involved came to a mutually agreeable conclusion after residents and the business owner met and listened to each other. Civil discourse and successful outcomes are possible. I think that if the NPP had been in place, some of the loud arguments we've heard regarding zoning cases would not have been so loud and so divisive. In the paperwork for their NPP amendment, the MPC staff lists its findings and states that the proposed text amendments protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. I think the Neighborhood Participation Plan goes beyond protecting the public health, safety, and general welfare. I think it's important to recognize and offer respect to the neighborhoods and individuals, including the corporate citizens. And I think the NPP does this by offering a structure where all involved can speak and be heard. You, the City Council, are in a unique position to help establish policy that offers respect and promotes public health, safety, and general welfare to all. We can make Shreveport better. I thank you all for your service.
Kristen Levin? Ms. Kristen Levin? No one's coming forward. I don't recognize this name, so I don't know. If Ms. Levin isn't here, then that concludes her request to speak, Chairman.
We have no further executive performance to be considered today, correct? Madam Clerk?
We don't have a rule.
Are there no items under consent agenda for introduction?
Chairman, would you forgive me?
Yeah.
I don't have a form for Mr. Kraft, but...
I did it online three days ago. Said it was submitted successfully.
Do you all mind if we go ahead and go right in?
No, Mr. Kraft. I don't.
I didn't know I had to do paper on top of digital.
We have.
Oh, you do have it. Well, it was submitted successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, my staff.
The great digital divide. Kenneth Kraft, 157 Archer Avenue, Shreveport, 71105. Resolution seven, the Learned Fournette Resolution. Going back 40 years plus, Mayor Hanna had 12 propositions, five up, seven down, November 4th, 1980. Mayor Hussey had two, six out of seven for Big John. Eh, we didn't want a zoo. Okay. That's failed three times. No zoo this time, thank you. Mayor Beard chose not to do anything. Mayor Bo Williams, five up and five down. Quick recap of how people make distinctions among the voting public. Prop 10, drainage, 68% up. Public safety, 66. Streets, 64. Those are the only three that passed resoundingly. Parks by itself, and this time parks is separate from police and fire, unlike 10 years ago, 52%, and even buses, 51%. And then you had the... And then you had the losers, the closest of which was industrial development, failing by 490 votes in a zoo and a stadium and some other stuff. And then, go back. This election on April 24th will be 515 days from the governor's runoff in 19. The amount, the amount's consistent with 19. A dollar today was worth 81. I mean, a dollar then is worth 81 cents today. Do the math, and it's actually a little less. It's over 200 million total, but it's consistent with 175 million. And 424, I think, is going to be a good day for the city. I'm going to disagree with my good friend Irma Rogers. I plan to vote for all four, but might vote against number two if Firehouse 11 is not included. It was included in 19, and today I heard the mayor say 14, 15, and 16. I'm going to ask my Broadmoor neighbors to vote down police and fire if we don't get number 11, 80 years old, taken care of.
Mr. Kraft, I feel sure that was an oversight on the part of the mayor.
Okay, I think it was an oversight. Okay, good. But not having heard it, I wonder. 424 is the best batting average ever, so Rogers Hornsby in 1923. It's going to be a low turnout. It's not going to be a governor's runoff. Everybody vote, whether you vote for it or against it. Everybody vote. Be my 197th election. Earth and heart. I'm going to end with my anagram for this bond issue. Last time I talked about care, cares, and races. Well, earth and heart. This is, this is two days, this election's two days after Earth Day, and we have to show our heart, and we have to vote for it. And finally, badge number 1385. We salute you, sir. And let's name house number five after letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. I'm sorry I didn't have your form, but it did. If it said that it came in, it came in. So we're all good. I'll make that conclusion.
Madam Clerk, will you please proceed to the regular agenda legislation?
Chairman, before I begin, Resolution 7 was incorrectly placed under introduction of ordinances instead of, or introduction of resolutions instead of resolutions on final reading. It's my understanding from the administration that this needs to be passed today to meet deadlines for the special election to take place. And it can be a one-reader. Again, it was just incorrectly placed as a two-reader on the agenda. It will require a two-thirds vote to move this to the, under final passage of resolutions, to this section.
So you'll need us, I need you to. What exactly do we have to do?
A motion to move Resolution 7 to the final passage of resolutions would be appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, please, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, my concern with this procedural change is that the City Council has advertised that this would not be adopted or considered a final passage until January 26th. This is a $206 million bond election. I want to make sure that every citizen who has an interest in expressing an opinion to the council regarding this matter, whether by appearing before the council meeting or in some other form, has an opportunity to do so. I'm willing to participate in a special meeting if this needs to be called or voted on before our next regular meeting. But I'm opposed to moving this from introduction to final passage today for the reasons I've articulated. Thank you.
Now, question. The reason we're wanting to move it is so we can go ahead and adopt it. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm not sure when the deadline of a special meeting would be appropriate to meet the deadline.
Could someone in the administration give us that? Mr. Whitehorn?
I had printed it. Let me make sure I've got it.
Okay. Take your time, no problem. In my haste coming down, I left it on my desk, but let me pull it up in my emails, and I can give you those dates.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I do believe if you guys do want to take it up in a special meeting, it would still be appropriate to move it to the correct section and then postpone it. Because if it's introduced, it will have to lay over for two weeks, so we wouldn't be able to have a special election to then.
What's a email? Just to move it over in the right section.
If we're all agreed to then postpone it, then to the special meeting, then I'm agreeing with that.
Okay, I think.
So what's the motion on the table?
Okay, the motion is.
The motion is to move this to, first of all, to a reading and final passage under resolutions. And then when we take it up, we can vote to postpone it with the understanding that we would be having a special meeting both between now and two weeks from now.
So it's yes and yes to postpone if you decide to postpone.
But I guess we still need to ask the administration if that's, that a special meeting would still give them enough time to do what we need to do.
And Alex is here for our bond council. I think he can, because the email came from him. He should have that information.
You want to make sure that citizens have an opportunity to give their input.
Okay. Alex, you want to come forward to the podium and answer any questions that the council might have, please?
Okay.
Are we on a timeline of our.
We are.
Can you give us some insight there?
Okay. We have a state bond commission deadline. I think it's January 19th. So we have to submit that, the resolution that's signed by the mayor by January 19th. So we're going to type timeline.
Yeah, I mean, and just to be clear, we have adhered to the timeline throughout. I know this is big, and it's popping up on us early in the year, but we didn't deviate at all from the typical bond timeline with this. The part that's missing from before is that we compose a citizens committee to choose which projects. Like I said, this bond is about 95% the same projects as before when that citizens committee convened. And Councilman, you're right. The 11 made the previous, and we do have to make an adjustment to that, but the citizens have very much weighed in here. That 5% change is based off feedback after the previous election that I've had, that my administration had with citizens, one of which was to remove SPAR from the public safety proposition, in which we did. And I've spoken to Ms. Rogers as well about economic development and to add more dollars for specific economic development projects. So we've made those adjustments. But again, the citizens got together on the last bond proposal and said what they wanted, and that's what we're looking at here.
So you're saying the citizens were those that were on the last.
Yes.
That's not a new committee?
Yes, no.
Got you.
We did not compose a new committee because this one is largely what they suggested with those, like I said, 5% deviation based off the fact. That's a rough number, by the way, but based off the feedback that we got back the last time in 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I should say that my concern does not relate to the process the administration has followed in composing the list of bond projects. My particular concern is that the council, again, advertised this as a matter that would not be voted on for final passage until January 26th. We are now in a meeting today about to move the final vote on this $200 million election from the 26th to potentially today. Again, I think the alternative is to have a special meeting between today and whatever date Mr. Washington just mentioned and address this after giving the public proper notice. It seems like legislation that is of sufficient importance that we should observe that procedure.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I misunderstood. You're right. I didn't understand that the mishap was on the way that we publicized it, so.
You good with that?
I'm good with the special meeting as long as we can get it in before the 19th, right?
Well, let me just add one thing. In order for us to put the resolution on for approval, we had to advertise to the public. I think we ran the advertisement maybe three or four weeks straight. I'm not looking at the statute now. Advising the public that we would place this matter on for today, for the vote. So the public did receive notice. Although the agenda had it down as a two-reader, the public received notice that this matter would be taken up on January 12th. And we put that in the official journal of Shreveport.
Well, I do appreciate that. I appreciate that additional information itself to know that that advertisement occurred. But the way that the public knows what business this body is going to conduct is by reviewing its agenda. Our agenda indicated this would not be voted on until the 26th. It is a small inconvenience to have a special meeting and take it up at that time. That's my preference.
Okay.
Councilman Nicholson, when will we look to have that meeting? Because we got a holiday.
We can have a meeting Friday.
Yeah, Monday's them, okay.
Friday. How much time do you need outside the resolution to compile everything you need to submit?
Statutorily, we could bring in the advertisement for today, and if we move that date off by a week, I would think we would have to advertise again, which would push us past the date to apply to the State Bond Commission and also past the date to apply to the Secretary of State.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Ms. Whitehorn. I'd also like to add that the fact sheet that's attached to the agenda has the timetable on it. And the timetable says introduction, January 12th, 2021. Final passage, January 12th, 2021. That's on the fact sheet. Okay. So we're going to go ahead and vote to move it over to the proper, on the agenda? Do we need to do that?
I believe that's already been motioned.
I know, but we need to, we need to vote?
Yes, you can vote on that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think it would be in order to wait until we got to this introduction of resolutions, whereas now we are here at number nine. I think we should finish and then get to that point and then do whatever we want to do instead of crossing the agenda.
All right. We'll wait.
Do you want me to continue? Do you want me to read the resolution?
He wants to read the resolution? Read the resolution?
No, I was saying.
That he wants to wait till we get over.
We're not there yet. Is there any reason why we get from nine to get over to B, introduction?
Because we would be moving it into this section to read it as a part of the resolutions under 9A. It would be coming into the section that we are currently on.
Getting in the right section.
Cool.
All right, let's vote. Just to move it.
It requires two-thirds.
Okay. We got one no and four yays. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Resolution 147, authorizing the continuation of the employment of special legal counsel to provide legal advice, counsel, and representation to the city of Shreveport and to otherwise provide respect thereto.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that passes with five votes for.
Resolution 148, authorizing the continuation of the employment of special legal counsel to provide legal advice, counsel, and representation to the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
That passes.
Five votes.
Resolution 149, authorizing the continuation of the employment of special legal counsel to provide legal advice, counsel, and representation to the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second. Let's vote. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that passes.
Resolution 150, authorizing the mayor to accept a monetary donation of $75,000 from the Caddo Parish Commission to the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Councilman Green, and second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that passes with five yeses.
Resolution 151, authorizing the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with the Sabine Parish Fire District Number 1, Works 3 and 4, for 40 used Scott Air Packs and masks, and 80 used 4,500 PSI valves for cylinders at $7,000.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
That passes with five yeses.
Resolution 152, authorizing a donation in the amount of $110,000 to construct two multipurpose sports fields at Airport Park Community Center in the city of Shreveport from the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation to be used by the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Yes.
After the vote, I just want to call Cheryl.
Okay. And then in further scope, let's vote.
I'm sorry.
That passes with five yeses. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Shirley, I just would like to say thank you very much that when I got on council, I asked you about, what could we do about getting multipurpose fields at Apple Park? You said you would get to work on it. Certainly, you have gotten to work on it, and a job well done. And I just want to tell you thank you, even though it'll be at Apple Park, but it'll be citywide. And thank you, and thank you also, Mr. Mayor, for.
I was going to say the real thanks goes to the mayor.
If you would be kind enough to have a Dick's Sporting Goods day, I sure would appreciate it.
He used to have an undercover boss day. Wasn't this a part of that?
Yeah, that was me putting on makeup for six hours a day, Councilman. Because I love you and Airport Park so much. But yeah, Dick's Sporting Goods donated it over to Airport Park, and we have another location as well, so.
Okay, well, when we do the Dick's Sporting Goods, you don't have to put makeup on again. This is cool. Thank you so much, yes, for your effort.
Goes to him. You should say, because the next thing is the bridge.
Resolution 158, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Red River Waterway District relative to the installation of the LED decorative lighting and the roadway lights on the Long Allen Bridge, also known as Texas Street Bridge, US 7980.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Fuller, and second by the chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
If we don't need to, okay.
That passes with five yeses.
Resolution 159, authorizing the mayor to accept a monetary donation of $50,000 from the American Electric Power Foundation to the city of Shreveport to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. Y'all noticed the boy on the mayor is really rolling in the door, ain't he?
Chairman, I just need to confer with my colleague at the other end of the dais real quick. Councilwoman Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have any sugar. That's why everything is so sleepy over there. Because we don't have our candy today.
This weight gain.
I got a box of matches. Just light them and have a candlelight.
Passes with five yeses. Next.
Resolution 160, authorizing the donation of Shreveport Police Department surplus property, specifically retiring one police canine.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes with five yeses.
Resolution 161, endorsing grant applications submitted by the city of Shreveport for the Louisiana Watershed Initiative Round 1 funding opportunity.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Fuller. Any discussion? Let us vote. Motion passes with five yeses.
Resolution 1, authorizing Verla and Julie Judd at lots 3 through 8, Block 10, Wallace Lake Heights subdivision, to make a connection to the city of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Green, second by the chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that passes with five yeses.
Resolution 2, authorizing Wim Wall LLC, represented by Chris Walls, at lots 2 and 3, Kings Bend Subdivision, Unit Number 2, to make connection to the city of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes with five yeses.
Resolution 3, declaring the official intent of the city of Shreveport to reimburse certain capital expenses from proceeds of lease purchase agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let us vote. Passes, passes with five yeses.
Resolution 4 to allocate funds to a specific not-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted in other charges in the 2021 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Second, uh, motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let us vote, please. And that passes with five yeses.
Resolution 5 to dedicate Viking Drive in honor of Bessie D. Smith for her commitment and contributions to her community and the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Council, vice chair, second by Councilman Green. Any discussion?
Councilwoman, please let me know when you do this.
Huh?
I said, let me know when you have this dedication.
Wouldn't you have?
It should be Sunday on Viking. We got a little program coming together. She has been very instrumental in assuring that we handle everything to, to her specifications.
Okay.
Let us vote.
You know I love you.
Precious plum.
And that passes, five.
Resolution 7 ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, to authorize the incurring of debt and issuance of bonds therein, making applications to the State Bond Commission, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Move to postpone.
Second. Motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by, by, uh, Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, that passes. Five yays. Did we skip six?
Uh-uh.
No.
No.
No. That was just, that was the resolution.
Resolution seven.
Okay.
We own six, we own introduction then.
All right.
Introduction of resolutions, Resolution Six authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in districts A, F, and G, and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution. Resolution Eight, accepting a donation valued at $13,000 from the Simple Church TV to the Shreveport Fire Department. Resolution Nine, authorizing the mayor to accept monetary donation of $200,000 from the American Electric Power Foundation to the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Information and Technology Department for the city of Shreveport. Resolution Ten, accepting a donation from the Shreveport Opera.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you proceed with the introduction of our decision?
Ordnance One to revise Chapter 34, Article Two, Division Three of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to provisions for flood hazard reduction. Ordnance Two amending the 2021 general fund budget, appropriating the funds authorized therein. Ordnance Three amending the 2021 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Nixon. Madam Clerk, will you proceed with the ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordnance 193, closing and abandoning a portion of Monk House Drive dedication in Section Eight Township 17 North, Range 14 West. And the Department of Engineering has requested that this be withdrawn, as it is a duplicate that's already been passed.
Do I have a motion to withdraw?
So moved. So moved.
Second. Okay, Councilman Green and Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes with six yeses.
Ordnance 194 to amend Chapter 10, Article Four, Division Two, Section 10-175 of the Code of Ordinances regarding hours of operation for retail dealers of alcohol non-downtown zoning districts.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Nicholson makes the motion, and second by Councilwoman Taylor. Is any discussion?
What does that do, Councilman?
What does that do?
Councilman Bowman, this will require liquor stores to close at midnight and remain closed until 8:00 AM. Those are hours that were discussed with stakeholders the last time we discussed this, and they found them more appealing than the 9:00 PM that I initially recommended. And so I hope that you will see fit to support it. Councilwoman.
Would that be retroactive for people who have stipulations that close them even earlier than the 9:00 o'clock?
This, this will not impact anybody with a special use permit. But look, this is a, I, I will just say, and I. I very much appreciate Councilwoman Taylor taking the lead on this legislation this time around. We don't need to give people more reasons to be riding through the streets in the middle of the night in the city. This will not prevent anybody from buying as much liquor as they care to every day of the week. This is a reasonable, appropriate restriction. I just relate. I ask you all to consider supporting it this time around. Thank you.
I guess I was specifically looking at people that we've put stipulations on. That's what came up before, or is that just gonna end up being?
It will not.
A permitting issue?
Well, this, it's a permitting issue. It doesn't, this is a citywide.
So if they want to, they can go back and ask for that to be reconsidered?
Certainly.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
That's it. So those that close at two or later, or stay open to four, whatever that's, that's open?
Close at 12:00.
So I can't leave the house at midnight?
No, you can't. I get it for you, Tina. If I move. I pick you up when you drive through.
Okay, y'all ready to vote? Okay. And that passes, six yeses.
Ordnance 195 amending the 2020 general fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Nixon. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. And that passes, six zero.
Ordnance 196, an ordinance to amend various articles and sections in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana UDC relative to the Neighborhood Participation Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Second, can we have Mr. Clark come visit with us about this briefly?
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Mr. Clark, would you please come forward?
Mr. Clark, good afternoon. As, as we discussed before the meeting started, I would appreciate a brief explanation of what this legislation will do if enacted.
Yes, uh, the Neighborhood Participation Plan has, as Ms. Camp, uh, did. What require businesses, when they are locating in neighborhoods, to meet with the neighborhood associations, to explain in details exactly what is being proposed, to answer any questions about what is being proposed, and to solicit input that will be brought back to the MPC Board, that they, two bodies did meet, they did discuss in detail, and that they did come up with a conclusion. I think the, uh, we initially brought this before the council, and it was on a volunteer basis. And for approximately six months, no one ever volunteered to have a neighborhood participation meeting. So we realized that the volunteer route would not work, and neighborhoods were continuously being left out, and neighborhoods were continuously, uh, being insulted and angered by the fact that things were happening and they did not have any input. And then we went through the COVID pandemic, and we were operating remotely and virtually, and they were not able to participate as they wanted to. So we decided that it would be to the benefit of the citizenry to make this a requirement, that if a developer or applicant is coming into that neighborhood, that they have a meeting with the neighborhood association. And we had one, and it was a classic example, with the Captain Street Neighborhood Association, that was a situation where the neighborhood met with the business owner. And we're so proud of this one that we know it's gonna work perfectly, that the neighborhood met with the business owner, and the neighborhood reached back out to the Metropolitan Planning Commission and shared with us that our requirements for amenities with a PUD were too strict and too overbearing. That they wanted this business to be successful, and that they wanted this business to have every opportunity to succeed. And so they suggested amenities that they would like in their neighborhood as opposed to the amenities that we had recommended, which means that the neighborhood buys into the process. The neighborhood is happy, and we don't have to live in that neighborhood, but they have to live in that neighborhood. And by her showing up, the day shows you that they're very happy with the process, that it works, and everyone will be excited and benefit from it.
But this sounds to me like the most salutary change, and I appreciate you bringing this legislation forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think it goes to back with Councilman Nicholson. Just back in March, as Ms. Rogers was talking about, you just don't have individuals coming into a neighborhood deciding they're gonna do their own thing without having any community buy-in. So that's what this does with certain zoning changes.
And, and just like Councilwoman Taylor is saying, uh, in that case, this applicant was not required to reach out to the neighborhood. So by the applicant's choice, he chose not to reach out to the neighborhood, and took his chances coming to the MPC Board based on the fact that there was an R3 right in the middle of a neighborhood, and he wanted to add to that, that, that development process. But if there had been a Neighborhood Participation Plan, where he would have had to come and discuss his plans with the neighborhood, the neighbors would have had a chance to have input, they would have had a chance to have discussion, and possibly they would have come to the MPC Board and shared their like or dislike as far as that application was concerned.
Correct. Echoing everything in this case, which was perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Six. Six, uh, yays.
Ordnance 197, an ordinance to amend various articles and sections in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana UDC relative to special exception uses. And there is one amendment. This amendment replaces Exhibit D, the prior submitted Exhibit D, amending Article 16, Section 16.6, special exception use was not in its completed form. The amendment containing new and completed language to Exhibit D replaces the previously submitted incomplete Exhibit D.
Okay, the motion of amendment?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Fuller. Is there any discussion? Let us vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move.
Motion passes six.
Excuse me.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I move to postpone the ordinance as amended. I and other members have received expressions of concern about this legislation from, from Scott Hughes and others. I, I certainly think we need to regulate Airbnb-type rentals appropriately, but I, I just would like us to have a bit more time to discuss the issue with the MPC.
Do I have a motion to postpone?
Some, some.
Second.
And second by Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
That's Jerry Bowman, Jr.?
That's Junior.
Exactly.
Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion postponed has passed, six zero.
Ordnance 198, amending the 2021 budget for the general fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? Let us vote. Motion passes, six zero.
Ordnance 199, amending the 2021 budget for the general fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let us vote. That. Six yays, passes.
Ordnance 200, amending the 2021 Capital Projects Fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let us vote. Motion passes, six. Yays.
Ordnance 201, amending the 2021 Airport Enterprise Fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Green makes the motion, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let us vote. Motion passes, six zero.
Ordnance 202, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2021 Capital Projects Fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by, by, uh, by, uh, Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? Let us vote. It's approved, six zero. Six yays.
Ordnance 203, amending certain portions of the Code of Ordinances, Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to housing, property standards, and abatement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. And it passes. Six zero.
Ordnance 204, amending the 2021 Street Special Revenue Fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Green, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. Passes, six zero.
Ordnance 283, zoning case number 20-141-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport, UDC, by rezoning a property located on the northeast corner of South Lake Shore Drive and Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R17 Residential Zoning District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District.
So moved.
I was gonna, go ahead.
You can go ahead on the same.
No, I was gonna say so moved.
Okay. Good.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Bowman?
So second.
Second by Councilman Green. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
This is, this is 183, is that right?
Yeah.
The staff report indicated that this rezoning request should be denied because of the negative impact it would have on the surrounding area, introducing commercial zoning into a low-density residential area. Mr. Clark or somebody appropriate, could you address that, please?
These camera people are gonna kill me, Mr. Chair. The, the situation at Lake Shore and South Lake Shore, and we met with Councilwoman Taylor to explain in detail and give her all of the information. When the subdivision was done, uh, many years ago, the developer of the subdivision wanted to maintain that corner lot as B1 in order to be able to have a commercial development on the corner for the subdivision. It's changed dramatically over the years with the four-laning of Lake Shore Drive and so forth. But that lot has remained the same, and that lot has remained vacant because it is not likely to, to develop as a residential lot. We had done restoration zonings for two years, where property owners have been able to come in, and if the, the map amendments, as a result of the UDC downzoned their property, they've been able to request that the property be returned to its original zoning. This was originally zone B1. It was always a commercial lot. The, sometimes I believe that the UDC made mistakes in its recommendations, and I think that some of you have seen in your districts that there were mistakes made, and we've done quite a few of these. And we've asked you this time, for this property owner, to just be able to help return her zoning class to what. able to help return her zoning class to what her father had done many years ago.
And there was no opposition present?
No.
And what's the prerogative of the council person?
There wasn't any opposition present. What they wanted to make sure is that, and I think the MPP does that now, for anything that will come through there, then that business, or whomever, would have to get the buy-in from the community. And that was the, one of the discussions that I had with, because I live not too far from this corner, for sure, so.
And if I, if I may add, one other thing, Councilwoman Fuller, that the, the lot has, the, the MPC's staff recommendation came prior to us having a in-depth discussion with the property owner, to understand the history of, of the lot and the history of the development and the development trends during those days. Once we received that information, we changed our position, but the staff report had already been published and advertised, and that's why when we got to the MPC board meeting, we recommended approval of the C1 zoning, and the board was kind enough to support us on that recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Clark and Councilwoman.
I didn't hear you, Councilman Nicholson.
I just said, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clark.
Oh, trust me, you know I betted it.
So it's your prerogative that we uphold their decision?
We can uphold, as we've done so in the past. I have the distinct pleasure of knowing that anything that comes that way would have to come through us anyway, so.
All right, we ready to vote?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
No, that's it. And not to mention that, that does intersect with parts of my district, and I've had discussions about that. It's not a big, not a big deal.
And that passes, six, zero.
Ordnance 205, zoning case number 20-146-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport, UDC, by rezoning a property located at the intersection of Rayville and New Bern Lane, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R112 Single Family Residential to R17 Single Family Residential. And the MPC board did vote to deny this, so it will require a two-thirds vote by the council to pass.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Clark has suggested that we remand this to the MPC for further consideration. I think that's appropriate, so I move to remand.
That's your motion?
Yes, it is.
Motion to remand it to the MPC?
Second.
And second by Councilman Green. Any further discussion? Then let us vote, please.
John, you ain't tell us why, but I'm about what you doing.
Councilman Bowman, there was concern among residents in the Long Lake area about the possibility of lots in the range of 7,000 square feet being approved. Mr. Clark explained to me that that's not the intention of the developer, and so he thought that the easiest way to clear up the confusion would be to send it back.
That passes, six, yes.
Ordnance 206, zoning case number 20-148-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport, UDC, by rezoning a property located on the southeast corner of Peach Street and Norton Street, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, from R15 Single Family Residential District to R3 Multi-Family District.
No.
Okay.
No, as in?
Second, what?
No, as in?
We do a motion to approve, but then we vote no.
No, that's right.
Right?
Yeah.
That's what you want, okay.
Okay, no further discussion, vote.
This motion to approve, and then I'll leave a second on that.
I just know it all the way down.
Jerry, did you second?
I second.
I'm voting no?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
If that's what you choose.
The red one.
Okay, we got six no's on it, failed.
Ordnance 207, zoning case number 20-152-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code, by rezoning a property located on the south corner of Marshall Street and Fourth Street, from IMU Industrial Mixed Use District to C3 General Commercial District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Fuller, and second by Councilman Green. Any discussion?
And let's vote.
And that's approved, six, yays.
Ordnance 208, zoning case number 20-153-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport, UDC, by rezoning a property located on the west side of Mansfield Road, approximately 680 feet north of McCutcheon Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, from R17 Single Family Residential Zoning District to C4 Heavy Commercial District.
So moved.
And this is in...
And Jane Green?
Yeah, Jane, okay, I got you.
And the Greens, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Nicholas, let's vote, and no further discussion. And that passes.
Ordnance 209, zoning case number 20-154-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport, UDC, by rezoning a property located on the south side of Lake Shore Drive, approximately 215 feet west of Lovey Street, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I1 Light Industrial District to R2 Multi-Family Residential District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion.
Hi, it's Mr. Clark proportioned.
Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark.
Is, is this the case with the veteran that had come back and?
That was the veteran that, not, I think she was active duty at Barkstelle Air Force Base that was being restationed or deployed to Barkstelle. The, initially, when I saw this, I thought we were talking about Lake Shore over by the area that we talked about earlier, but this is actually over by Levy Street, which is right off the interstate.
Right.
And these are duplexes that are already in place now. It's just another one of those situations where property got zoned incorrectly, because there are two new duplexes, but, and they're very nice-looking duplexes, but they're zoned industrially, and so we recommend that they be rezoned back to use that could be used.
She plans to live there, come and back.
Right, right, right when you exit off of them.
Yeah. Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure I remember that correctly. Okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Here, welcome.
Please vote. And that passes with six, yes. Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance number 11 of 2020 has been tabled since March of last year. I understand the Engineering Department is going to introduce new legislation soon addressing the same issues, and so I move to take that legislation off the table and withdraw from the agenda.
And I here second by Councilman Green, so let's, any discussion on that? Let's vote to remove, take it off the table.
John, you heard that, or that's a truth statement?
Chairman, let's go ahead and remove Resolution 100.
Our esteemed city engineer advised me of that today, Councilwoman.
Which one, Ms. Fuller, I'm sorry?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to remove Resolution 100 from the table.
Second.
Okay, motion to remove 100.
You sure?
We can always bring it back.
And second by Councilman Green.
Well, I support it.
Right. Okay, let's, any discussion? Let's vote to remove.
Just keep it in the little folder?
And that passes to remove, six, yeses.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Vote to, uh, pass life share today.
Life share?
Oh, it's not on here?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
You did that.
It's been so long I haven't got it.
You did that last, you did that last. Shot on my head on that one, huh? Ladies and gentlemen, we have no property standards or ADO MPC ZDA appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Do we have any reports from our officers, boards, and committees? Is there Clerk's report?
Yes, we received the following letter of appointment from the mayor's office on January 6, 2021, which is subject for confirmation on January 26, 2021. It includes the three assistants of the attorneys that you guys previously have confirmed, and then in addition to the Shreveport Memorial Library Board, Josephine Wade. And then I also received a public notice from our bond counsel to read into the record regarding the legislation which previously postponed. If you'd like for me to read that now. Public notice, notice of intent to call an election. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 19.1 of Title 42 of the Louisiana Revise Statute of 1950, as amended, that the mayor and the city council of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, the city, acting as the governing authority of the city at its regularly scheduled meeting on February 9, 2021, and its regular meeting place, Government Chambers of Government Plaza 505 Travis Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, at 3:00 PM, will discuss and consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to authorize a special ad verum tax on all properties subject to taxation within the city upon approval by the qualified voters therein, and it passed for such tax to be levied thereafter by the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, for announcement and publication in the official journal. That concludes the Clerk's report.
Madam Perkins, do you have an additional communication?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any council member has additional communication?
Yes. I just want to say, I, um, I had been, you know, some people had tried to contact me, and I've been out of pocket. I was out for a medical procedure, and I felt good today, and I came to the meeting, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Good, glad to hear it. Well, everybody's seeing that yellow, too.
Drop the sunshine, drop the sunshine.
I'm glad to see you all. Okay. We will now open up the floor for election of Chair and Vice Chair, and I will take nominations for the Chair of the council.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Mr. James Flurry as chairman to continue. He's doing a great job, and I'd also, of course, we'll vote in order. I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Taffeta-Taylor for Vice Chair.
Okay. If you would like to take them up separately, just as a reminder, the chairman cannot vote.
Yes, we'll pick them up separately. I just...
All right, is there any other nominations? For Chair, that is. Can we have a hand vote? All in favor?
I'll try.
Jerry Bowman for Chair.
Okay, we got, wait a minute, we got a, Councilman Fuller's nominated, Councilman...
Mr. Chairman, what is the procedure? I understand if you're nominated, you can't vote, and so if we have too many nominations, we're not going to have a majority that can elect a Chair. How, how is this to proceed, Madam Clerk?
The person who is nominated for Chairman cannot vote. Since there is a monetary increase, they cannot vote for themselves to receive that monetary increase. So it's not the person making the nomination, it's just, you know, if Chairman Flurry is nominated, he can't vote for himself.
I understand that, but do we take the nominations serially, meaning we vote on the first nomination, and then if that fails, on the second?
Yes.
Okay, so the nomination is for Councilman Flurry to continue. And, you know, I, this has been articulated off the record. I will, I will add my voice in support of Councilman Green's nomination. Last year was as, as strange and difficult a year as the city has ever experienced. The pandemic, of course, disrupted the operations of the city and of the nation. Chairman Flurry also was incapacitated during a battle with cancer, which, thank God, he won, and he's here with us today. And so I, I think it's entirely appropriate to allow him to continue another year, and I will also say that in, in the spirit of maintaining the status quo, I, I would like to see Councilwoman Fuller continue in her position. Thank you.
Okay, can we have a hand vote?
Mr. Chair?
Uh-huh.
As your campaign manager, I'd like to say you've done a great job. I'd like to beg you to keep on doing a great job.
Thank you.
I call for the vote for Chair.
For Chairman?
Madam Clerk, will you tally the vote? So we vote? We didn't hear you.
You can vote on the voting system, you just can't vote.
Right, yeah, you can vote on the board here.
They can register their votes there.
Okay.
I want to respectfully decline the, the vote for, the nomination for Chair. I appreciate it, but I'll decline, and I'll vote with Councilman Flurry.
Thank you.
It's Chair.
Okay, thank you all very much. Now, nominations for the Vice Chair?
I nominated Taffeta-Taylor.
Okay, Taffeta-Taylor.
And I nominated Councilwoman Fuller.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Taffeta would go first. Call for the vote.
Can I vote for my thing?
Okay, four, two.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting. Any other comments before we dismiss? Thank you all very much, Madam Chairman, this is your end.